All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our City Council meeting. And as usual, my fellow council members will be video conferencing in, and I'm here at the dais with Tracy Noonan, our city attorney, and Drew Powers, our city manager. We are eight feet apart, so we are practicing social distancing. And the small audience in front of me all have their masks on, so we are doing what we need to do. Before I get started with the meeting, I'd like to pay tribute to the survivors and those that we lost on 9/11/2001. September 11, 2001 will be a day that is forever remembered for both its tragedy and for the unwavering spirit of the American people that was on display in its aftermath. As a tribute to the thousands of people who tragically lost their lives and to the first responders, whose courage and sacrifice gave us hope and allowed us to continue to believe in the goodness of humankind, we would like to begin tonight's meeting with a moment of silence, if you would please. Thank you. Hard to believe that was 19 years ago. All right, and now we are going to go to our pledge of allegiance. So if I could all have you stand. And if you join with me, I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now, if we may have the roll call, Ms. Rodriguez.
Councilmember Engler.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Hello. Can anybody hear me?
Yes.
Hello?
We got you, Ed.
We got you.
Mayor Pro Tem Bill Dillipena.
Present.
Mayor Adam.
And I'm here as well. Well, I must say, to get started, that we have a rather special occasion here this evening. One of our council members turned 90 on Sunday. Can you guess who that was? It was Ed Jones, our esteemed council member, our junior member of the council, right, Ed?
I don't hear anything. Am I on the meeting?
Well, we hear you. Can you hear me?
His audio is probably turned down externally.
All right. Well, let us remedy that situation. Considering I'm paying tribute to Ed, I'd like him to be able to hear me.
I clicked on the mic, which I don't know if I'm heard or not.
We hear you, Ed. Do you hear us?
I think I've unmuted myself.
We do hear you. Can you hear us? We're gonna have a little timeout here till we get this straightened out.
Mayor Adam, would you like for me to go ahead with my update and then come back around?
Yeah, that's a good idea. Why don't we do it?
Shall I just hang up?
We'll come back to you, Ed.
Or might I stay on the line?
All right. Mr. Powers is going to go ahead with his customary update on our COVID situation.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Adam. While there, working with Councilmember Jones, I thought I would just go ahead and provide tonight's update. We are sitting today with the latest numbers at just over 11,000 total cases since the beginning of the pandemic. Today, the county is reporting 296 new cases, and those cases run from Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. A number of those new cases are attributable to an outbreak that happened at the pre-trial detention facility. So that's just a point of reference, that a number of those cases emerged from that. We now have 123, tragically 123 deaths that we're reporting. However, our numbers at both the, in the ICU and... Both the ICU and the hospitalization numbers are trending much better. We have currently 59 people hospitalized across the county, but only 12 of those are in the intensive care unit. So those numbers are tracking better. I think what folks are watching probably most closely is whether or not we advance on the state's monitoring list from stage one to stage two. And we had high hopes today that perhaps we were getting close to moving to stage two. And unfortunately, it fell just short. So of the six metrics that we utilize, five of those are now green, indicating that we are within the guidelines to advance to the next stage. The only metric where we're falling, where we're falling short is the seven-day average case per 100,000 population. The goal is under seven, and we're currently sitting at 7.8. And so the state, the way they manage these numbers, they release the updated numbers each week on Tuesdays. So we will have to wait until Tuesday of next week and hope that we have reached that threshold. We're sort of crossing our fingers. We don't have any other additional outbreaks that drive those numbers upwards. Several counties did make it to stage two today, the largest of which in Southern California being Orange County. And the reason that that next stage is important is it allows for some indoor dining opportunities. It also allows for other businesses to resume some form of indoor activities. And so we are going to be watching that very carefully. The county is advocating very closely with the state as we move through this process and continue to maintain high volumes of testing capabilities. So that will conclude my updates from COVID-19 for tonight. And I will be happy to answer any questions that the City Council may have.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. So we're very close to transitioning to stage two, or tier two, and that gives, definitely gives us a little bit more advantage as far as operating and opening. Looking forward to that. We, just to change the subject just a little bit, we had a very serious heat wave over the weekend, did we not?
We did. We experienced record temperatures in a number of areas, and we are tracking right now the potential of a wind event that could begin later tonight, tomorrow, and impact some areas of the county. So we have been in close contact, our Public Works team, with Southern California Edison. There are a number of circuits throughout the county that are currently on the watch list for a PSPS, a public safety power shut-off event. But none of those are currently on the watch list in Thousand Oaks. There are some in Simi, Fillmore, San Rosa Valley, Camarillo, and around. We did have our cooling center up and operational. I believe we had, over the course of the weekend, I believe we had a grand total of three individuals that took advantage of time within the cooling center. So certainly continues the compounding effect of difficult times that we've experienced in 2020, but I think we continue to face it with resiliency and trying to be prepared to support our community in whatever way we can.
Yes. We had to do a few rescues this weekend, did we not?
We did. We had to make, this weekend was a challenge in responding to the heat. We had a number of folks that chose to go out on our trail system, both our COSCA trails and our national and state park trails locally. And our fire department, police department, COSCA Rangers had to engage in a number of rescues this weekend. It made us, it put us into a place where resources were taxed and strained, and we had to close those trails for the weekend in conjunction with national recreation area and state parks. And so just a reminder to everyone with temperatures like this, as much as we love our trails in open space...
I can see and hear now.
It's really a very, very difficult situation when it taxes our resources in that manner. So we did have, there was one unfortunate fatality that was reported. This was in Malibu Creek State Park, but was a 41-year-old female that succumbed to heat illness. So very serious conditions.
Yeah, triple-digit heat is gonna be a really dangerous situation. And with the winds potentially picking up, we all want to be very careful how we maneuver around the city in the next day or two. And I understood, this is probably well-known. I understand Woodland Hills got to 121 degrees.
They did indeed. Yeah. The article I read said the last time it was that hot in that area was 125,000 years ago.
Wow. Okay. Record after record.
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of questions.
Yes, go right ahead, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you. Mr. Powers, I had a couple of questions regarding the comments you made. One was the sixth category, which we are not quite meeting, but very close to meeting. And you say we will not know until next Tuesday. Is anybody keeping track over the next seven days to see if perhaps we could get off that watch list before next Tuesday?
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem. We're certainly watching the data on a daily basis. That said, the state, the way they are managing the numbers, and Tracy, feel free to chime in if you would like, is that they are only making determinations about counties coming off the list on a weekly basis on Tuesdays. So they're treating it as a rolling seven-day with a determination made each Tuesday. So no opportunity to have that looked at prior, at least as it stands right now.
And no exceptions can be made? Or could perhaps, could we request that an exception be made the day that we meet all six categories?
As it stands, yeah, as it stands right now, that's not, that's not the way they are managing it. That being said, as I mentioned, the county is advocating pretty fiercely for continued flexibility. And so I'm sure they're having those discussions on a regular basis with the state. And, you know, I would add to that, that there are, there are a lot of nuances from a county, on a county-to-county basis. For instance, we have quite a bit of testing capacity. And so that is one of the things that we think is, should be looked upon as really favorably as it relates to the way Ventura County is structured.
Thank you. And then my second question was about the cooling centers. We've had the cooling centers open for several days now, with the first heat wave and now the second heat wave. Do we know how many residents have taken advantage of the cooling center? You mentioned the number of three. Do we have data for any of the other days?
Three was the total for the entire weekend.
Oh, okay. What about the first heat wave? Do we have data for that?
We had one.
Thank you.
All right.
And one of that, just one point on cooling centers for everyone's knowledge. You know, the reason they're getting perhaps additional attention right now is that in a COVID environment, the areas that would traditionally be leaned upon as de facto cooling centers, like libraries and the mall and those other areas, aren't as easily accessible or open to the public. And so it puts us into a situation where you need to have a little bit more formal setup that is staffed in order to provide that resource.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Powers. Now, Ed, are you there and can you hear me?
Yes. Can you hear me?
I can, loud and clear, loud and clear.
Thank you. I've been watching you for 15 minutes, but I wasn't able to speak.
Well, that's not going to be the case going forward, because I am gonna have you speak in just a moment. But I am first going to congratulate you on a real milestone in your life, your 90th birthday, which was just this past Sunday. And, you know, I've been in town since 1977. That's a pretty long time. And Ed has been a part of this town ever since I moved here. He's done so many incredible things for the community, served in so many different ways, Board of Supervisors, Canoe Wreckin' Park District, the Thousand Oaks City Council. Ed authored the original general plan back in 1970. And I would, I would bet that Ed's probably knocked on every single door in this city at one time or another with his campaigns, because he's a real gentleman who cares about individuals in this town. And he wants to help, and he wants to solve problems. And Ed, I think that's a real, a real commendation for you. And like, like, I think it was Satchel Page said, "Age is a question of mind over matter. If you don't mind, it doesn't matter." And I think you live up to that, that saying, Ed. And I have a feeling maybe some of my other council members would like to pay tribute to you as well. Would you like to say a few words, Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ed, we're working on saying happy birthday for you, but we're afraid we're gonna be losing votes in the next election if we do that. So happy birthday to you, Ed. 90 years is longer than most people live. And to do that in a healthy fashion as you are, in an active fashion as you are, being a public servant and serving on the council and participating in everything is absolutely astounding. It's absolutely amazing. I don't know of anyone else in the country quite your age that is doing all the things that you are doing for our community. And so, you know, like wine, everything gets better with age, right? So congratulations on your 90th, and it's a pleasure and honor to serve with you.
Councilmember Engler.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to thank Ed. Ed has been a fixture in the community for almost 50 years now. And that entire 50 years, he has been active, serving the public in a variety of functions, as you had mentioned. He's an inspiration to all of us of what it means to be a public servant and how to live a good life. And Ed, I just wish you the happiest 90th birthday you could have, and thank you again for what you've done.
Very nice. Ed, how's it feel to be 90?
Well, I, I feel fine, and I appreciate all those nice comments. Let me just say that I got a card today from Dot Blainfully. I don't know if you've ever heard of her, but I went to her house a little over 50 years ago. I think it was January or February 1970, and it was at sunset, and it was rather dark. And she came and spoke to me through a screen door. And I said, "Good evening, Mr. Blainfully." And she'll never let me forget that I thought she was a man. It's unclear to me if I got her vote as a result of that. But thanks for all the kind words. I appreciate it. It's a great honor for me to serve with all of you. And I just think you've done a terrific job since I left in '74. And now I'm back, and you've kept the city in very good shape, and I appreciate it very much. So thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you, Ed. You have moved through the generations. I know you knocked on my father's door looking for a vote, and then some years later, you knocked on my door looking for a vote. See, you've crossed generations, and we really appreciate everything you've done for the city. And congratulations on your 90th birthday. All right. With that, we are going to go to public comments. If you'd announce those, Ms. Rodriguez.
This is a time and place for public comments. For those wishing to address the City Council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction, all remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Under state law, public comment matters may not be considered by the council unless listed on the agenda but may be referred to the city manager for administrative follow-up. We have two individuals that have requested to speak, and pursuant to council standards, speakers are allowed three minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. First up, Adam Haverstock. Evening, Adam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council members, my name is Adam Haverstock, Director of Government Affairs and Tourism at the Greater Canoe Valley Chamber of Commerce. I don't have a full report tonight, because I was just here at the last meeting, but I did want to tell you about one exciting project that has moved forward since last time I was here. but I did want to tell you about one exciting project that has moved forward since last time I was here. We received approval from the County of Ventura to start a new project we're calling Picnic in the Park. It is going to be a partnership with Cano Recreation and Park District. They have been trying to find a way to safely utilize outdoor spaces. And we've been finding, you know, trying to find ways to provide more opportunities for businesses to be successful. And so we're going to be doing a contactless, in-your-car food pickup at Cano Creek North. We're going to be doing it every Thursday during the month of September. And then what we're going to do is open up the park at Cano Creek North. So families or households can preorder food. They can pick it up right in their car, park their car at the park, and then sit down in a socially-distanced manner and enjoy a nice meal. So there's details about that program at canochamber.org, which is our chamber website. And people need to preorder their food because there's no ordering on the spot. We don't want any lines. So you have to order your food. We have two different, we're going to have different restaurants each week. This week on Thursday, it's going to be Barone's Pizza or Smokin' Steve's Barbecue. So for Smokin' Steve's, you have to order your barbecue by midnight tomorrow. And for Barone's, you have to order, I think, by lunchtime on Thursday. But you're welcome to order your food in advance. I believe it's family-style, just big, like, you know, food for four people. And then, and then you get to eat in the park. So if anyone has any questions, feel free to let me know. Or there's information about that on canochamber.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. And next up, we have Dan Twet. By phone, I believe. There we are. Dan, did I pronounce your last name correctly?
I pronounced it Tweet, actually, but...
All right, Tweet, Dan Tweet, got it.
And I just want to add my birthday good wishes to Ed, happy 90th. This should really be Ed Jones Happy 90th Birthday Month. We should just declare September that. I know he was really wonderful and gracious when I actually ran in 2018. And I guess I should say I'm running again. But I just want to thank everyone, council members, city staff, residents. And what I wanted to mention tonight was some communications ideas. I'm a CERT graduate from the 2019 Community Emergency Responder Training Class Team. And it's, first of all, I guess that's on hold probably with COVID and everything. I actually had to miss the final exam because of the COVID situation when they do the mass casualty simulation. But if they do present that online or in person again, I just think it's a great class. And I want to urge people to get involved with that. And actually, relevant of that, there was a great Zoom webinar with the founder of CERT. It was on September 2nd. It was a Zoom meeting. Frank Borden actually was the guy who founded CERT down at the Los Angeles Fire Department in 1985. So CERT is 35 this year. And there's actually another group that I didn't even know about called BICEP, which is the Business and Industry Council on Emergency Planning and Preparedness. And that's just an amazing website, bicep.org. And they've got a replay of the webinar with Frank Borden and a lot of CERT people. But I'm also a ham. Ham radio is great for emergency communications. But there is a simple pair of apps that you can put on any smartphone, even if they're not subscribed to the cellular network. And it lets you text from phone to phone. The one that does that is called Bridgeify, just like the word bridge with a phi on the end. You can just Google that. And the other one is kind of a location app called What Three Words? What number three and then words? You can just Google that. But that lets you identify any three-meter square with just a three-word phrase. So if there ever was a problem with communications, with the cells being out of usage or overloaded, if enough neighbors were running these Bridgeify and What Three Words apps, we would have kind of a resilient decentralized communication, kind of emergency response capability. And so those will, I'll probably put information about that on my Facebook page for my city council run. And thanks for the opportunity to present tonight.
Thank you, Dan. All right, that concludes our public comments. And now we go on to the consent calendar. Any items to pull, my fellow councilmembers?
Mr. Mayor, Bob Engler here.
Yes.
I was thinking about pulling 7D mainly for comment. And it's a small question, but it's mainly for comment.
Certainly. We'll have you do that. And can I get a motion for the remainder of the consent calendar?
I move the remainder of the consent calendar.
All right, Mayor Protem moves the remainder. Vote, please.
Councilmember Engler?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Protem, Bill De La Peña?
Yes.
Mayor Adam?
Yes.
And that motion carries 4-0.
All right, and Councilmember Engler has pulled 7D. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. 7D is a, one of the key things that we do in the cities is take care of our wastewater. That wastewater does produce biosolids. And our, and our current hauler for those biosolids was simply using it as a cover for their industrial waste that they had in a mining operation out in the desert. I have a quick question for if it's Mr. Finley or not. Can, because of the way that was structured, we did not receive any diversion credit from the state? I just was wondering what that meant and why that is important?
Yeah, we have Nader Heydari to speak to us to that question. Councilmember Engler?
Okay.
Oh. That's what you were saying.
Thank you, Mayor Adam and Councilmember Engler. Correct, yeah, the current hauler, although it is being used beneficially, the biosolids, it doesn't meet all the categories for calorie cycle in terms of, you know, true beneficial reuse in terms of being put back into the environment and everything. So it was somewhat of a technicality, but we made sure that the new agreement that is, this is the successful completion of the request for proposals, included more stringent environmental requirements to make sure that we do meet the calorie cycle objectives, which includes some, you know, benefits and some grants. But generally, it's larger than that. It's just part of our efforts to be as sustainable as we can in these operations. And this is one of our largest, you know, environmental services we provide for the city is to do the treatment of the wastewater.
And this, the new hauler is going to be using this as a, to make compost for the, I assume for the farmlands out there in Central Valley? So we're getting some really good use out of that rather than just as a landfill topper?
Correct, yeah, that's going to both, they have facilities in Kern County as well as another one north of Victorville. So it will be used in multiple locations. But in both cases, it will be used as compost, converted into compost.
And then the price was more or less the same price we're paying now?
Yeah, it was only, you know, it was less than 10% increase. So it was $2 a ton more and it was about 50 previously. So from 50 to 52, so quite minor of a, of a cost increase. We had envisioned it might be, might be larger, but we were pleased with the result of the RFP.
Well, I just want to highlight that. I'm pleased with the result to take what was, basically, we were, we were using it in a, almost a landfill situation and then getting some use out of it that is environmentally sensitive. That's well, well worth the effort of the city to do that. I appreciate your, your bringing this forward.
You're very welcome.
All right, thank you for bringing that up, Councilmember Engler. Would you care to move 7D?
Yes, I'd like to move 7D.
All right. Have a motion and a vote, please.
Councilmember Engler?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Protem, Bill De La Peña?
Yes.
Mayor Adam?
Yes.
And that motion carries 4-0.
Thank you very much. All right, we have a department report this evening. It's our only department report, but it's an important department report because we're going to be looking at a land management system that our staff is recommending to us. And we have Michael Forbes, our Deputy Community Development Director, to tell us about it. Good evening, Michael.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Adam and members of the city council. The request before you this evening is to award a professional services agreement with Tyler Technologies Incorporated for a land management system, which I'll talk about in a minute what the land management system is, as well as authorizing acceptance of a grant of $310,000 from the state planning grant program to help offset the cost of the system. So what is a land management system? It's pretty much any records or business that the city does that are related to parcels of land. And in this case, public works will be included, so also with things within the public right-of-way. It's a system for managing all of that information and managing the processes and services that go with it. So it will include parcel and land records. We'll be using it to manage building permits, plan checks that go with that, as well as the inspections, all of our planning projects and zoning approvals, our code compliance cases, as well as business licenses will all be managed through this system. The system that we currently have, we've been using for many years, since 1987 in various forms. It's had some updates, but nothing really major since the 80s. However, the system is critical to the daily business functions in multiple departments. Community development, public works, finance, all use this system on a daily basis. And as a result, it directly impacts our service delivery and the quality of our customer service to the public. Unfortunately, the system that we have, while it has served us for many years, it's based on outdated business practices and technologies. And it really has very limited functionality compared to the systems that are available today, in particular, the ability of newer systems to provide services online to the public. So we started this process back in December of 2019. We issued a request for proposals. And we received proposals from nine different vendors to provide this system to us. So we put together a selection committee that was composed of 21 staff members from community development, public works, finance, and the city manager's office to go through all of the proposals and decide which ones would best meet our business needs. As a result of that review, we narrowed it down to three finalist vendors. And they were invited in for interviews and to provide comprehensive demonstrations of their products. Through that process, the committee came to a consensus that the system provided by Tyler would best meet the city's needs and provide us with the best ability to serve the public. We, having identified Tyler, we reached out to a number of cities throughout California that have used Tyler or are currently using Tyler to discuss their experiences, hear the pros and cons, get some tips from them on what to do and what not to do when you're implementing and using the system. And based on the feedback that we received from other cities, we were confident that Tyler would in fact meet our needs the best of the systems that we were looking at. So through this process, because it's the RFP process, the city is not required to go with the lowest bidder. The city has the flexibility to select the vendor that will provide the highest value to the city based on the system's ability to meet the city's business needs. And I will note that Tyler is not the lowest cost of the systems that we looked at. But the committee strongly felt that it did present the highest value to the city, given its features and capabilities and given how it would allow us to provide superior customer service compared to the other systems that we looked at. So from a budget perspective, the city council originally planned for this system in fiscal year 1920 and allocated $1 million in that budget. That is being carried over to fiscal year 2021. In addition, as I noted, we did apply for and receive a $310,000 grant from the state's Senate Bill 2 Planning Grants Program that will be used to offset the first-year cost of implementing the system. There is an annual cost associated with the system for licensing and maintenance. And we will address that in the next and future biennial budget process. So the first-year cost of the system, the first year is the most expensive because that's when we're paying for the implementation, the training, the conversion of the data from our existing systems. So the first-year cost for that is a little over $790,000. That includes an extra 10% that we've added in for extra services just in case something unforeseen comes up, if we run into some problem with our data conversion or anything like that, that we need additional funds. So that's already built into that and hopefully we won't need to spend that. And again, as I mentioned, that cost will be offset by the $310,000 state grant that we've received. Going forward, in year two and years following that, the cost to maintain the system is 200, almost $249,000 a year. And that is subject to a 5% annual increase each year, which is pretty standard in IT, that you would have a 5% annual increase on your contract. That amount will be offset, however, by the reduction and elimination of some of the fees in the existing systems that we will be retiring as a result of getting the new system. And we estimate that those costs are close to $78,000 a year. So that reduction will help, help offset the cost for the new system. So why is this good? Why are we, we're very excited about this. And why is that? The, the system is going to have a lot of features and benefits that our current systems do not have that are going to help us both internally with our processes as well as with serving the public. Most importantly, we're going to have improved customer service and public access to information. It will be very easy for the public to get online and find the information they're looking for about parcel records. It will be a map-based system. So people that are familiar with Google Maps or other mapping websites that are out there, it will be very intuitive and easy to use the system because of that. We expect that there will be reduced processing times, in some cases significantly reduced times, getting some permits through our process because of the workflow features that will allow us to streamline some of our processes, get information back and forth between departments more quickly to outside agencies more quickly that will significantly increase our efficiencies. Because of the way the system is set up with all of the different departments sharing the same database, sharing the same information, we expect that there will be significantly improved communication between the city departments and with outside agencies. And it will allow us to more easily share our data and see what, what everybody's working on and what everybody's doing in the system. The system will also have built-in data reporting that will include things like graphs and charts that will be good for both staff as well as for the public to instantly find information about how many permits did we issue? What's our average process time for a permit? All those different kinds of metrics that we like to look at to see how we're performing and how we're serving the public will all be readily available in the new system. The, the most exciting thing about Tyler and frankly, the primary reason that we selected them as our preferred vendor is the public portal. They call it CSS, Citizen Self-Service. And it's a very, very robust package of functions for the public, both to find information as well as to apply for things, submit information to us, submit payments. It's be a one-stop shop online for basically anything that you can come in and do now at the community development and public works counters, as well as the finance counter as it pertains to business licenses. All of that will now be able to be done online 24/7, 365. Including just some of the highlights here, people will be able to submit their applications for building permits, planning projects, and business licenses. They will be able to receive their permits and licenses electronically, whereas currently we mail them out and they have to wait to get them in the mail. They'll be able to get it instantly when it's approved. They'll be able to set up a user account that will provide them with instant access to all of their information. So you can see the screenshot that's on the right here is a sample dashboard that somebody might see. So this would be like for a contractor or somebody who does repeat business with the city. You can see they have up at the top, my inspections, my invoices, my permits. It shows them how many permits they have active, how many require attention from them, meaning that they've hit some point in the process where they need to take action. My plans is the plans that they have in review right now. So it shows them how many are pending review, how many need attention. So this will be a really great tool for the public to use and be able to instantly get access to this information. And then for the public at large, this is a screenshot of another city that uses this system. So we will have something very similar to this. So you can see all the different options that are available. People will be able to submit plans and receive their plan comments electronically. Whereas right now, we're passing large rolls of paper back and forth. That can all be done electronically. They'll be able to schedule inspections and view their inspection results, instantly see if they passed their inspection or not. They'll be able to submit and check on the status of code compliance cases. And one thing that we get a lot of requests for now that will now be able to be done through this system is people will be able to search parcel histories. So if they want to know all the building permits that were issued on a parcel, all the zoning approvals that were ever given on a parcel, if there's any outstanding code compliance cases on a parcel. compliance cases on a parcel, all of that information will be very easily searched through this system. So our recommendation this evening is to award the professional services agreement with Tyler Technologies, Inc., and to authorize the city manager to execute that agreement, to authorize acceptance of the state grant of $310,000, and to approve a budget appropriation to accept that grant, and to approve an expenditure for this fiscal year of $791,740, which will cover the cost of the implementation and setup and all of the first-year licensing fees for the system. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions from the council.
Thank you, Mr. Forbes. Sounds like you'll be able to carry the community development department in your pocket on the phone, right?
Pretty much, yes.
That's amazing. All right. Council members, any questions for Mr. Forbes?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mayor Protam.
Thank you so much. I had a question about comparison to the other two vendors. Do we have a table that shows the, I may have missed it, stepped away briefly, that shows the costs of the other two that were considered?
I don't have a table, but I do have those numbers. The other two finalists that we looked at were Central Square and OpenGov. Central Square's prices were a little bit lower than Tyler. Their first-year cost was about $535,000 to do the full system setup, and then their annual fee was about $202,000, so a little bit lower than Tyler. OpenGov was substantially cheaper, but we found, and I'll give you those numbers in a second, but just to state up ahead, that we found that their system frankly lacked a lot of the features that the other two systems did, and we determined that it really would not meet our needs. But that their cost was quite a bit lower. Their first year was $211,000, and their annual going forward was $138,000. But their feature set was significantly less than the other two, so after seeing their demonstration, we focused primarily on the other two systems.
And what kind of feedback have you received, or did you receive, in your research from other cities which are using Tyler?
All positive feedback. We did talk to several cities because we wanted to have, you know, a fair perspective on it. Tyler provided us with a list of cities that they recommended we speak with, and they, you know, predictably all had very positive experiences. But we also reached out to a number of others that they didn't connect us with, including those that we had heard may have had some road bumps in the implementation process, or, you know, it took longer than they expected, or things like that. And even the cities that things didn't go as efficiently or quickly as they had hoped still had very positive things to say about the system. They stressed the need for, you know, a real commitment from city staff to work with Tyler to have it properly implemented, and gave us a lot of pointers on things to do and not do during implementation. But we did not come across any city that had a negative experience with the system.
And any of those cities in California?
Yes, there's a couple here in Ventura County, actually. Ventura is one, and Simi Valley is in the process of implementing it now. Simi was one of the cities that had an up-and-down experience with it, but they overall still had positive things to say. There's a number of cities in Orange County and the San Diego area, and a number of cities up in the Bay Area that use the system. One of the positive things that we heard from a lot of cities is that because there are a lot of cities that use this product, there's a very involved user community, both, you know, online discussions as well as an annual user conference, and that that's very helpful as you use the system and learn how other cities are using it and how other cities are using it to serve their customers. So that was one of the things that we really liked about it also.
Thank you so much.
Mayor Protam, if I might add on to that, I just want to take a moment to commend Michael, who's been leading this effort since back in December. As you probably heard in his presentation, he assembled a team of 21 staff within the organization. The reason that group was so large is that a system like this is, this is a very rare thing to upgrade your enterprise system for land management, and so it's something that you do not want to wade into lightly. And as we were doing our reference reviews and those conversations that were being had, a lot of perhaps the bumps in the road that some cities experienced were perhaps attributable to cities perhaps not being fully vested and weighed in on the staff process side before implementation. And that's something that Michael and the team in the CDD and his partners in public works and finance have really worked hard at ensuring that this is only, the technology, you pick the best technology tool that has the most flexibility and the best ability to grow with you, but it's only as good as the staff implementation and the process on the backside of it. And so that's something I think we recognize very, very clearly, and our team knows is going to be an important aspect.
Anyone else? Yes.
Yes, Mr. Forbes, thanks for your efforts on this. It seems to be a two-fold type program where there's quite a bit of backend work that's done for the ease of the city and making the city's functions a little bit better, but then the public interface is the part that I'm most concerned with, just to make sure that we have a very robust public interface for our developers and our builders, from homeowners to home builders. This program will allow them to be almost touchless, is that the way I'm seeing it? In other words, doing quite a bit of stuff online rather than having to schlep down to City Hall with their bundles of plans and that sort of thing?
Yes, it will. Anything that people can do now at our public counter, they will be able to do online. So be it finding information, submitting applications, submitting plans, picking up plans that have been reviewed, all of that will be able to be done online. We're certainly, you know, we're not intending to replace our public counter. You know, as with everything, there's always, you know, people that prefer, you know, the traditional approach and maybe don't know how to use the technology, so we're certainly not looking to replace or get rid of any of our in-person contact once we're, you know, able to do that again. But this will certainly be another option for people that, and like I say, it will be 24/7, since it's online, it will be accessible anytime. So people will not have to come into City Hall and worry about what our business hours are or anything. They'll be able to do that at any time.
And it's a substantial cost. It's quite a bit of money to upgrade this system. Last time we did it was, oh, what, 30-something years ago? So I'm glad that we're upgrading this to a modern system. Is there, do you anticipate that some of our current personnel can be redirected in other areas of development, or can we get more efficiency out of our personnel in your office there?
Yeah, I think that it will allow us to be a lot more efficient. I think our, the volume of permits and cases that we have right now is so incredibly high, and it's, you know, we struggle to keep up at times. So this will just allow us to be much more efficient and able to keep up with the work and, you know, reduce our timelines for plan review and permit processing and, you know, just get people through the process faster, make the process easier for people to get through. And it will also allow us to, you know, to engage in much, you know, better records management, better records keeping, to make that information available to the public now and in the future.
Final question I have for you. We do have partner agencies, Fire Department springs to mind, who has interest in some of our building codes and also is part of any kind of review. Will they have access to this system as well? Is there any interface that works for them?
They will, yes. That was one of the things we made sure of as we went through the review, is that agencies like fire and police and CRPD that need to review our projects or have an interest in our projects, that they would have the ability to access that. And there's ways we can set it up where they can, they can access certain things but not have full access to the system for security reasons. So there's different ways that we can give them access, and they will have it.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Jones.
Yeah, I, in reading this over, I see that this can be very efficient, and it can be very helpful to people that want to deal with the city in the area of land development, getting permits and so forth. I'm just wondering, hitchhiking on one of the questions Bob just asked, are there any economies associated with this? We're about to spend $1.86 million, which will be partially offset by a grant from the state, but is there any money saving to be derived from this process?
Not in a direct money in hand sense, but in the sense of efficiencies, yes, absolutely. We'll be able to make much better use of the staff and other resources that we have to us, and really, the focus of it is about being able to serve the public.
And Michael, you might want to mention the retirement of the old contracts piece. I think that's what he's, one of the things he's referencing.
Oh, yes, yes. I did mention, absolutely. Because this will be replacing some of our existing systems, we will have that cost savings. So we've estimated it's about $78,000 a year that we will be saving by retiring those old systems. So yes, that absolutely would be a cost savings.
And let me just get one more point clear. Now, you mentioned, I know you went through a process where you went down to three people, and then you chose this company that you're recommending. Would you explain again to me why this company was chosen over the others, if there is an added cost to it?
Sure. We looked very closely. All of the products, you know, they have the same general function, but they all do it very differently, and they vary greatly in the different features that they had. It's like if you were looking at a car and you have to decide, you know, if you want the power windows or not, and the air conditioning or not, and the, you know, do you want the navigation system? So it's, the car is still going to get you from point A to point B, but there's a lot of bells and whistles you can add to it that will make it just a much better experience. The two things that really stood out about Tyler, first of all, from the perspective of the public works department, Tyler has a separate module for public works that really helps them meet their needs and serve their customers in a way that the other systems did not. So that was a big selling point. And then the key point, as I mentioned, was their public portal and the ability to serve the public online. Some of the other systems offered that, but they did not have as complete a set of features. They didn't offer as many online services. And the user experience, as far as, you know, the user friendliness of it and finding the information, learning how to use the system, they had really, Tyler has put a lot of thought into their product, we think, and has tried to make it the best possible experience for the public. So that was really one of the main selling points for us.
And if I might add to that, Councilmember Jones, as Michael just mentioned, you know, one of the key aspects of any system like this is the efficiency of the user interface, and we want as many of our customers from a mom and pop that are doing a small addition on their house, or putting a water heater in, to a developer of a new office complex, to be able to utilize our system, to choose to utilize our system, and be able to do that efficiently. And so that user interface component is really where the rubber meets the rug, and that's, that is the key point that differentiated this particular vendor from others.
So then, the final analysis, we're doing this for the benefit of our constituents, people who are going to be dealing with us. I had an occasion in my interim period when I was not on the council to help people get permits. One thing I thought Bob Engler was getting to was about the fact that maybe we could be losing a lot of our people at the counter. I would just say that I hope we don't lose our personal touch. I always enjoyed talking to Ed Brinkley and John Shepherd and John Prescott and others. So I hope that we still have that same nice relationship that we have cultivated, I believe, over the years with our constituents here in Thousand Oaks. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jones. You know, our mission statement says that we will provide extraordinary service to the citizens we serve, and I think this system will allow us to accomplish that goal. As Councilmember Engler mentioned, this is where we have direct interface with the public, so we need to put our best foot forward, and that's what we're going to do here. By my calculations, I think about 20% of the cost is going to be offset by that grant and the fee reductions from the old systems, so that's good. And I'm impressed about how well this has been vetted with 21 staff members from community development, public works, finance, the city manager's office, I can tell you, really took this seriously and really looked at it. And I think it's important for, to replace a 33-year-old system with something that's going to allow people to have remote access and the kind of things that people are demanding these days. There's a little bit of COVID connection here, too, because we're kind of responding to the fact that people want to be able to do things remotely. And I'll just say one last thing. Mr. Powers was kind enough to give me some statistics, and this is over the last 12 months during COVID, between building permits, inspections, planning applications, activity at the counter, calls, we processed over 50,000 transactions, over 50,000. That's a lot. And to do it manually is one way, if that's the right way to put it, but to do it electronically like we're looking at now is, I think, is going to be incredibly more efficient, so.
Mr. Mayor?
So with that, yes, Mayor Protam?
I was just going to say, $1.8 million obviously is a ton of money, especially during this difficult time that we are finding ourselves in. But I would expect that the system will last, just like the current one we have now for 30 years.
Yes.
So that's about $60,000 a year that we will be paying, so that's how I look at it. Just wanted to mention that.
Good point. We should get a lot of use out of it. And I like the fact that you're committed to learning the system as well. That's all, that's part of it. And also, you're able to share with other cities. That's good, too. You can, you know, benefit from their experience. All righty. Any other discussion? If not, I'll call for a motion.
I'll move the recommended action.
Thank you, Councilmember Jones. We have a motion on the floor. Vote, please.
Councilmember Engler?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Protam, Bill De La Pinha?
Yes.
And Mayor Adam?
Yes.
That motion carries four to zero.
Thank you very much. Should be a great system. All right. That is really the extent of our business this evening. We can go to our city manager for any follow-up items that he may have. Mr. Powers?
Thank you, Mayor Adam. Right now, our next scheduled meeting is two weeks from tonight, on the 22nd of September. We currently don't have any formal agenda items, but we'll be evaluating that as the week progresses here. We have a couple of items taking shape for October, including our item on the 13th of October, which is coming back to the city council at your request on single-use plastics, and so we're going to be working forward on that. So we'll be evaluating the meeting on the 22nd. If no formal items emerge, we may, we may be canceling that meeting, but we'll update the council and the public as we get a little bit closer to that. We do have two meetings slated for October 13th and 27th. Both of them have agenda items that are moving forward for those evenings. That is it for my update.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. And Ms. Noonan, we have some closed session announcements?
We do. Thank you, Mayor. We have two closed session matters tonight. Both of them are existing litigation, excuse me, pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9A. The first one is Suzanne Rosenthal versus City of Thousand Oaks, and the second one is Britt Nicole Marie Sumpes versus City of Thousand Oaks. It's unlikely they'll have anything to report.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Noonan. And thank you all for tuning in, and we're going to adjourn this meeting. I want you all to stay safe out there, and we'll see you in a couple of weeks. I want you all to stay safe out there, and we'll see you in a couple of weeks.